Call the meeting order.
Kelly Morris, here.
Sean Lucas.
Here.
Aaron Peterson.
Here.
Darlene Graham.
Here.
Zern Best.
Please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, first up, we have our presentation by Mr. Blake Pace from Decker and Pace, and it is our 2024 audit report.
Good evening, my name is Blake Pace, I'm a CPA with Decker and Pace CPA firm, presenting this year's 2024 fiscal year audit report. It's my understanding that you guys have a digital copy, so that's what we're referring to. While I'm going through this, if you guys have any questions, comments, feel free to stop me, and I'd be happy to answer those. Start the audit presentation on page one. And page one is what's titled the Independent Auditor's Report, and there's basically three main paragraphs of this report. The first being the opinion paragraphs, the second being the responsibilities of management for the financial statements, and then the third being the auditor's responsibility for the audit of the financial statements. So, kind of in plain English, what these paragraphs say is the responsibilities of management for the financial statements is just to furnish to us all relevant financial information, so books, invoices, any, anything financial in nature that we might request, and then our job as the auditors, provide an opinion on whether the information provided to us is free from material misstatement, meaning the numbers check out in terms of the amounts, and that it's also in the right format per government accounting standards. And so, the main point of the audit is to express an opinion, and we express that at the top paragraph of this report. The city received a clean opinion this year, which is the highest designated opinion you can receive, and it means just what I mentioned earlier, that the financial information presented to us is in fact free from material misstatement, and it is in the right format in this report per government accounting standards. And so, any outside reader, banks, bonding agencies, citizens, that's what they're going to be looking for, is that clean opinion. There's additional opinions I'll go over later that have to do with the single audit. You guys, your federal grant expenditures exceeded 750,000 this year, and so there's extra layers of auditing that kick in and extra opinions that are involved, and so I'll touch briefly on that at the end. But, that being said, I'll just kind of go over the content of the audit report and some of the main financial information. Most of the pages following this independent auditor's report is what's called management discussion analysis prepared in-house by management, just highlighting some of the main key financial changes over the past fiscal year. That portion is unaudited, again, because it comes from management. But in terms of the audited financial statements, what I want to hit starts on page nineteen. Page nineteen is what's commonly known as a profit and loss statement, but has different names for government accounting purposes. This is specifically just for your general and street operations or governmental funds, as opposed to your proprietary type activities, your water, sewer, electric type operations. In total, the, the general and street funds brought in revenues of eighteen million, seven hundred and eleven thousand, seven hundred and eighty-six dollars, up from the prior year, had total expenditures of twenty-one million, four hundred and fifty-seven thousand, three hundred and twenty-four dollars. And then down below, in the other financing sources and uses section, you'll see some of the lease issued, the transfers in and out, some miscellaneous items, all in all, leading to a net change in fund balance of eight hundred and twenty-three thousand, one hundred and seventy-three dollars to the plus, specifically for the governmental funds. And so, just really a main few takeaways we have from this, first being your revenues were up mainly due to the public safety sales tax that was issued in the prior fiscal year, and we're starting to see some of that being collected and recognized during this fiscal year. And so that's, that was the main reason why the revenues were up within the governmental funds. Expenditures were kind of just up across the board, kind of just what we're seeing with local governments right now, everything's more expensive than it used to be, and so not really one particular thing that drove expenditures up, but still fairly comparable with prior years. But, the main point being that net change, the eight hundred and twenty-three thousand last year is roughly seven hundred thousand, so within the same ballpark again with years prior. Just a, a simple test we do is we look at your total expenditures for the year, and we break that down on a monthly basis, and we look at how your cash balances compare to that total expenditures from the year. And so, by monthly basis, I mean, we look for three to six months of cash in terms of operating expenditures. And so, kind of a cash target for the governmental funds would be anywhere from five point three million, roughly, to ten point seven million, that'd be six months worth of cash, and the governmental funds far exceeded that six months expectation, they had fourteen million, four hundred and forty-four thousand, three hundred and eighty-six dollars in cash, so about eight months of cash sitting within the governmental funds. So, again, that well exceeds our kind of target expectations in a sense. That being said, I'll flip to page twenty-two. Page twenty-two is a similar statement, but again, it's for the proprietary funds, your water, sewer, electric operations, I mentioned earlier, pretty much the same statements, just has different formatting requirements per government accounting standards. So in total, these operations, utility operations, brought in revenues of twenty-eight million, three hundred and seventeen thousand, eight hundred and ninety-eight dollars. There is expenses of twenty-three thousand, three hundred and fourteen, three hundred and ninety, twenty-three million, three hundred and fourteen thousand, three hundred and ninety-five dollars. And then down below, in non-operating revenues and expenses, you'll see some of the interest earnings, gain on sale of assets, interest expense, and then the transfers in and out below, like I mentioned earlier, coming from the governmental funds or going to. All in all, leading to a change in net position of four million, two hundred and eighty-eight thousand, nine hundred and fifty-seven dollars. Last year, this number, this change, was five point two million, it was what your change in net position was, this year, it's down a million. The biggest reason is you transferred money, more money out of the, the proprietary operations this year, but although you transferred out, it's staying within the government, and it's not like it's leaving the city, and so it's, although it's, it's a decrease in terms of a net change, it's staying within the government, so not really anything that's too alarming to us. Again, a similar test we look at, how does your cash balances compared to your total expenses for the year? Again, we look for three to six months of cash, so our kind of target expectations for the enterprise funds would be anywhere from five point eight million in cash to eleven point six million. The enterprise funds cash far exceeded that expectation, there is about thirty-six million in cash at the fiscal year end, so plenty, plenty of money to work with. I'll flip to page twenty-three. Page twenty-three is what's called a statement of cash flows, and this solely looks at cash in, cash out, whereas the statement prior, it includes depreciation expense and some other non-cash items. This is purely cash in and cash out of the enterprise funds. There's really two main takeaways we take from this statement, the first being the net cash increase for the year, you'll see that about halfway down the page. The enterprise funds increased their cash balances by four million, sixty-six thousand, and twenty-one dollars, this was pretty consistent increase from the prior year. The second main takeaway we take from the statement of cash flows is near the top of the page, there's a line that says net cash provided by operating activities, and that number's eight million, five hundred and ninety-one thousand, six hundred and thirty-six dollars. This number's kind of a good check, in a sense, in terms of how are your rates doing, how are your operating expenses compared to your rates, and are you really overspending above and beyond what your rates are? Really, what we look at is, is your, is your cash flow from, from operations sufficient enough to cover your debt payment, and then to cover any capital outlay type purchases? And so, for the last fiscal year, your capital outlay within the enterprise funds is around three point five million, and then your principal and interest on your loans was around another five to six hundred thousand, again, only within the enterprise funds. So, all in all, that eight point five billion number far exceeds what we'd expect in terms of the ability to pay back that debt and then purchase capital assets. So, all in all, in terms of the financial information, really no worries or, from our office, I mean, the numbers are outstanding, again, cash balances are phenomenal, change, net changes year over year, again, are fairly consistent, but really good balances. That being said, I'm going to flip to page sixty-two, just kind of for a final point here. And as I mentioned earlier, there's additional opinions we have to provide because you exceeded seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in federal grant monies. When you spend the federal government's money, they want to know where it's going, how it's being used, and so, page sixty-two is what's commonly known as a CIFA, Schedule of Expenditure of Federal Awards. This basically outlines the federal monies that were spent during the last fiscal year and the programs associated with those expenditures. Again, you'll see at the bottom, one million, six hundred and ninety-one thousand, one hundred and nine dollars of federal monies were spent, puts you into that single audit threshold, but really the main additions that it adds to our audit requirements is for us to look at your internal control over your grant programs, and so that being the ability not to just write a check with grant monies without it going through some due diligence and checks and balances, that's one thing we look at is the internal control. The second thing is compliance with the actual grant money, so using those according to their purpose, according to what the program was designed for, and why the money was remitted to you in the first place. And so, you'll see on page sixty-four. Sixty-four, it just says federal awards, internal control over major programs, there was no major material weaknesses identified, no significant deficiencies identified. And then, as I mentioned earlier, there's an additional audit opinion for the major program that we tested, that, that opinion was unmodified, or again, a clean opinion, so it's the highest designated opinion you can receive, and again, this was just specifically on compliance over your grant, over your grant program. So, if anyone were to point fingers saying, you know, you're not using the grant monies according to purpose, that's where you could point them, in terms of saying that's been tested, and those monies are being spent according to purpose. And so, again, that's not every year we have to test that, just whenever your grant monies exceed seven hundred and fifty thousand, but kind of some added layers this year, so. All in all, no, no worries from our office, I'm not sure if the management letter is attached to the report that you guys received, but if our office had any worries, that's where we would report it, there's no findings or issues to report, and so you'll see that if you review that document.
Any questions? I do appreciate the very clear overview on that, that definitely, definitely helps, I think it's good for us that, I think a lot of this is not a surprise, because we have a pretty good budget process and go through all this prior to spending it.
Definitely, yeah.
All right, any questions?
If you guys think of anything at all after the fact, our contact information's on the letterhead, so give us a call, we'd be happy to answer your questions at no additional cost, it's part of the audit, so be happy to, you know, answer any questions you guys might have.
Perfect, thank you very much, appreciate it. And thank you, Jennifer, for staying on top of everything and keep us in a good spot. All right, I will open up the visitor section, we don't have anyone scheduled, but if you'd like to, feel free to do so at this time. Jeff, you good? All right. I will close the visitor section. All right, next up, first reading Council Bill twenty twenty-five dash twenty-one.
First reading Council Bill number twenty twenty-five dash twenty-one, in ordinance of the council of the city of Nixa, vacating certain right-of-way associated with North Cynthia Drive and West Tracker Road, presenting is Planning and Development Director Scott Gaby.
Mayor Council, good evening, the city of Nixa has been requested to vacate a right-of-way associated with North Cynthia Drive, just south of Catherine. Yeah, did you say Tracker? Sorry, my mind is somewhere else. It does say Tracker, but it should be...
Hello, Mr. Gaby, welcome to the council meeting.
Okay, let's start again. Mayor Council, good evening. We have been requested to vacate right-of-way associated with North Cynthia Drive, south of Catherine Street. This property was originally included on a plat as right-of-way back in nineteen seventy-three. I believe if you look at the streets, on street view of your, if you go there, about halfway down the street, it basically turns into an extension of Springfield Marine's parking lot, it's, I don't think it's ever been in, maintained as a street, it's just been an access basically for Springfield Marine, and then also the second building down on the east side has some loading docks and bay doors on the backside, so that building has also been using this, this as access. Because of that, when we are abandoning the road and the right-of-way, we do have underground electric in this area, so we're requesting that that gets maintained and stays in a easement. There's also a sewer line that is not currently enclosed in an easement, so we're getting, requesting that also has an easement around it. In addition, we are asking for, or requiring, an access easement so that the, the property that currently has access can maintain their access. So, all in all, it's going to still look the same as it currently does, but the right-of-way will be abandoned, and then the adjoining properties will then be extended to the center line of what was Catherine Street. Staff doesn't see any really future opportunities for Catherine Street or Cynthia Drive. I'm not starting over. So, to the south, there's already some single-family residences, so if the property, the, the large acreage to the southwest were to develop, there's not a really good clear extension of Cynthia to go in that direction. So, this was read to the Planning and Zoning Commission, they, nobody approached the commission to express any concerns on this item, so P and Z Commission did unanimously vote to recommend approval to City Council, and staff does recommend approval, as there's no, again, it's not being maintained as a street right now, and there's really no future for it to be extended, so staff does recommend approval, if you have any questions, I'm available.
Which street was this again?
North Cynthia Drive, it is just east of Springfield Marine.
They are planning on expanding, correct?
Correct, and this abandoning Cynthia Drive will give them a little extra space if they need it.
Perfect. Any questions for Mr. Gaby?
The only question I had, I think I asked the other night too, was, and so maybe someone from the department can answer that, but was, have we been using, I guess, have we been treating it like a normal street and clearing it during snowfalls and stuff like that, or is it we just let the ownership of that, those facilities drive on it like they, have we, have we maintained that road?
Yeah, it's not a, a major thoroughfare in any way, so it is not a part on, it is not included in the snowplow list, I don't believe, so it just mainly fall on the sun helping it.
Okay.
Yeah, we don't, we don't actually do the snowplowing on it, technically, because it is to be right-of-way, we could be liable for maintenance of it, so because we haven't utilized it as a street, and it's not being utilized as a street, and we don't maintain it as a street, it reduces some liability for us to be a bit less liable to kind of vacate it if it happens, it happens to use as a jewelry department.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
I will update the memo, thank you.
No other questions, I will open up the public hearing, if you'd like to speak on this, do so at this time. And I will close the public hearing. Any other discussion from council? All right, moving on, second reading Council Bill twenty twenty-five dash eighteen.
Second reading Council Bill number twenty twenty-five dash eighteen, in ordinance of the council of the city of Nixa, amending chapter sixteen, article four, division four, section sixteen dash one ninety-seven and sixteen dash two hundred of the Nixa City Code for the purpose of expanding in the authorized period to sell and discharge fireworks, presenting is City Administrator Jimmy Lyles.
Mayor Council, before you tonight, is an ordinance to actually extend the sale of fireworks within the city limits by one day, as well as extend the discharge of fireworks by a day. Currently, the ordinance allows the sale of fireworks from June twentieth through July second, from eight to eleven, and also on July third and fourth from six to midnight. This change would add July fifth to the sale of fireworks, again, it would be from six AM to midnight. Currently, the ordinance for discharging fireworks is July third through fourth from two to eleven. This ordinance would then add the fifth, so it would be July third through fifth from two to eleven. I will mention that I did reach out and speak with Chief Wallace from the Nixa Fire Department, and he is aware of the potential ordinance change, didn't have any significant concern, other than he did point out that July fourth, they do have a blackout day, so they have all their staff available that day for, you know, because of the potential higher risk, that would not be the case before the fourth or after the fourth, but they, they don't, wouldn't be a blackout day, but they still have staffing, so it wasn't a significant concern, he just pointed out that, that small detail that to make council aware of.
I just want to clarify the timing for the discharge part of this, is it going to be two PM to midnight or two PM to eleven? Because if we're going to change that to two PM to midnight, is that correct?
It's the same, two to eleven.
It's going to stay two?
The timing doesn't change.
Okay, because both, both sections does say two to midnight.
On the memo, yes, the memo is incorrect, we addressed that to last.
Right, I just want to make sure we're clear on that, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, if you read the, look down at the ordinance.
I'm just double checking that, make sure we didn't change that.
And then, as you can see before you, there is a, a potential amendment that I'll, I'll turn over and let Mr. Peterson speak about.
Yeah, I had requested an amendment be drafted for this, I had some citizens reach out, excuse me, who were concerned with expanding it to three days rather than just two, like we've had in the past, with concerns over pets and maybe veterans with some PTSD type situations. And so, the amendment that I had asked Nick to prepare proposes to do the fourth and the fifth rather than the third, fourth, and fifth. I didn't know if anybody had any thoughts on that or opinions?
Well, I think that goes back to why last year, or the year before, we went ahead and adopted the third and the fourth, was because it seemed like we were constantly making exceptions each year, or we had done the previous year, and if we're going to change this every year, it gets confusing for the people that enjoy shooting off fireworks, it gets some confusion for the people that sell fireworks on when they're allowed, when they're not allowed. So, originally, we'd set the third and the fourth as a consistent date, and then now we're looking to add the fifth, which, if I understand it correctly, would be, it would be the third, fourth, and fifth going forward, and not just this year. So I think if we're going to continue to change it every year, then why do we have the ordinance and not just, I mean, why don't we just, I guess, write a new ordinance every year?
Yeah, and that's what we're doing currently, is we're amending the ordinance to add the fifth, so we're essentially doing what you had said we should not do. But, to be fair, I mean, I just, I had that brought to me, and so...
Sure, no, I understand, and I'm just stating that how it's, it's, we gotta, we gotta pick something and stay consistent with it, is, is what I'm saying. So if we're moving it to the fifth and sixth this year, then are we going to move it next year to the second and first, or second and third, I mean, based off of when the holiday falls? Because I think that's kind of what we've been... Cuz I think that's kinda what we've been doing the last few years, is changing it to when the holiday falls to try to accommodate.
I mean, we could, but...
But I think if we, the 3rd and 4th covers two days, especially for the people that they have to work on the 5th, but now that the 4th is gonna be on a Friday, then people like, I wanna celebrate on the, on the weekend, so if we offer the 3rd, 4th, and 5th, it gives people the days to, like, three days to, when they can accommodate their schedule to celebrate, I guess. That's my opinion of it, obviously. I mean, I was content with it being the 3rd and 4th, but then we wanted to add the sale of the 5th this year.
Right, and to avoid confusion with discharge and sale.
Yep, yep.
Yeah, that was, and I, I understand.
And I, and I understand why we're adding the 5th, so...
Any other thoughts, or?
I think if the sale stays the same, which it, I think we should keep it that way going forward, cuz the, the business has made a very valid point on that. That's fine. I don't, I don't necessarily believe it really matters on, on the discharge, because even if you said this is how it's gonna be going forward for every year, for the next hundred years, every single year right before everyone's gonna ask. So, you know, as long as it's put out there and people know what it's changed to, I do think accommodating weekends versus weekdays is always good when you can. But I'm, I'm good with whatever.
I just look for consistency. I mean, that's what I'm, I'm thinking of, and, and so, if, if we, if we don't, if we don't add the 5th and take away the 3rd, the other part of that that I look at is that regardless what days we say it's legal, people are still gonna shoot them off. Police is gonna get calls, you know, so if it's the 3rd and the 5th, it reduces the number of calls our police officers have to make, if it makes it, and, cuz they're gonna get calls the whole week prior and the whole week after, probably.
Yeah, it allows them to respond to ones that there's actually a...
A, a problem.
A problem.
Yeah.
I live pretty close to the county line, so I'm gonna hear them all week, for the two weeks after, so...
Aaron and I do, too.
Yeah. Gunshots and everything else.
Well, just kinda reading the room, I think I will just not make the motion, and we'll just leave it on the amendment. Us.
Yeah. Okay. I'm perfectly fine leaving it the same. Any other comments? Do you have any addition to that? All right. No other questions or comments, I'll open up the public hearing. I will close the public hearing. Any other discussion? I will accept a motion to approve Council Bill 2025-18 as written.
Let's move.
Second.
First by Mr. Lucas, second by Mrs. Morris. Roll call, please.
Sean Lucas?
Yes.
Aaron Peterson?
Yes.
Kelly Morris?
Yes.
Darlene Graham?
Yes. I keep thinking we're going in order here.
That got weird.
I keep thinking we're going down the row, sorry.
Hi, Kelly.
Yes.
Yes, we received...
Sorry, Kelly.
Four yeses. Motion carries. Like your enthusiasm, Darlene. Next up, Council Bill 2025-19.
Council Bill number 2025-19, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Nixa amending Chapter 20, Article 7, Division 2 of the Nixa City Code by adding thereto a new section to prohibit parking across parking lines on city-owned property. Presenting is City Attorney Nick Woodman.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. The City Council had a first reading of this bill at the last meeting, along with a staff presentation. The bill does what the title suggests, it will prohibit parking across parking lines on city-owned parking lots. It's pretty simple. I'm available if you all have any questions, or if I can provide any clarification.
Any questions?
I would have a comment that I would like to make, though. Initially, I was having some trepidation with this ordinance, as it seemed like it was maybe just resolving one issue, but after a discussion with some staff and others, I've come to realize that this is a larger issue than just the one incident that I knew of specifically, that kinda self-corrected. But I do feel confident with moving forward with this now.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. If nothing else, I will open up the public hearing. And I will close the public hearing. Any other discussion from council? All right, I will accept a motion.
So, my...
Second.
First by Mr. Lucas, second by Mr. Peterson. Roll call, please.
Aaron Peterson?
Yes.
Sean Lucas?
Yes.
Kelly Morris?
Yes.
Darlene Graham?
Yes.
All right. Next up, Second Reading Council Bill 2025-20.
Second Reading Council Bill number 2025-20, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Nixa authorizing the mayor to execute a water storage agreement with the Southwest Missouri Joint Municipal Water Utility Commission for the purpose of providing the city with an allocation of water from Stockton Lake. Presenting is Assistant Public Works Director Travis Kossi.
At the May 27th meeting, I provided you with a pretty detailed and exhaustive report on all the, all the issues related to this proposed ordinance. Tonight, I'm gonna spare you that pain and anguish of having to hear that again, and opt to provide you with just the, just the Cliff Notes version of it. As, as a bullet point items, this is a pass-through contract with the Joint Municipal Utility Commission arm of Southwest Missouri Water to allow Nixa to participate in a stock, a water allocation that the Corps of Engineer has authorized for Stockton Lake. The City of Nixa would be purchasing 1 million gallons of a 38 million gallon allocation, along with eight other entities in Southwest Missouri, to authorize the transfer of water from Stockton Lake to the City of Nixa. This contract is the first step in a multi-step process. This will allow us to purchase the water. The next step and phase of the development and transfer of this water will be to engineer the infrastructure necessary to transfer that water from Stockton Lake to the City of Nixa. So, this is a, this is a phase one of a very long-term project to secure additional water resources for the City of Nixa to accommodate future growth. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have regarding it.
Any questions? It's gonna be one of those deals that 45 years from now, we're gonna be really happy we did.
That's right. Someone will thank us.
Hopefully, yeah. All right, thank you, Mr. Kossi.
Yeah, and hopefully, it's 45 years.
Yeah.
Exactly. All right. If no other questions, I will open up the public hearing. If you'd like to speak on this, do so at this time. And I will close the public hearing. Any other discussion from council? All right, nothing else, I will accept a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
First by Ms. Graham, second by Mr. Peterson. Roll call, please.
Aaron Peterson?
Yes.
Darlene Graham?
Yes.
Sean Lucas?
Yes.
Kelly Morris?
Yes.
All right. Anything else staff would like to add?
Mayor, Council, just a quick update. We had our first movies in the park over the weekend, went great, but our next one is June 28th, so coming up quickly. It is the one that is in conjunction with the One Read One Nixa, so we're showing Charlotte's Web, and there'll be a lot of activities. I think they're looking at a farmer's market and things like that prior to the movie, with that movie starting at dusk, so call that 8:30 or so. And so, a lot of activities prior to the movie, but just our, our next movie in our series, that's all sponsored by the Matt and Gil Group.
Any update on the benches and...
They are supposedly in shipping, so we should be seeing those anytime. I'm hoping by early next week. They shipped on the 6th.
I'm still waiting for something I ordered back in February, so I get it.
Is the Volunteer Day rescheduled yet?
We are looking at days, August and September are very, very packed months, and so, we're trying to lean away from August just cuz it's so hot. Looking at September, hopefully, we'll have a date for you at our next council meeting, looking somewhere mid-August, or, I'm sorry, mid-September.
Maybe since we had to reschedule that one, I even moved a tee time to make that, and then you had to reschedule it on me. It's ridiculous.
I can't control the weather.
I know, I know.
That's your job.
But maybe we can look at doing, cuz I had an idea a while back about, we'd have to post it, obviously, we'd get the council together, and the council go out and do it. So, it would be posted, cuz we'd all be together, but anyone else could attend if they wanted to, and I think it would be a good time. So, let's, let's discuss that next week.
We can do that.
Mayor, I think Becca's gonna briefly talk about the workshop.
Right, so this is a reminder that workshop is next week. Thursday and Friday will begin Thursday at 9:00 a.m., and Friday will begin at 8:30.
Looking forward to it.
Very good. And then, one last thing. I did, at the request of council, I did reach out to the company that represents the McCroskey CID, and did speak with them about the budget that was presented to City Council. They first wanted to make sure that you knew that they are very, they wanna be very transparent and open on any questions, which I told them, obviously, that wasn't, you know, that wasn't a concern, we just needed a little more detail. And they did point out that they did have an allowable amount up to 500,000, and they've got about $45,000 left on that. But so far, on the expenditures that you've seen within the budget were for the reimbursement of the ride-in, ride-out there on McCroskey Street, which is, which we originally thought that was probably paid off, it's not quite yet. They're still reimbursing themselves for some of those costs. And then, the other portion of that, they said, was, and that was about the hundred-and-some thousand dollars in the budget, I thought it wrote it down, it was 110, 120, something like that. But there was maintenance costs for the lot, and also for repairs on that lot. And they said that, the company said they do assure us that every expense is in line with state statute, so, and they're happy to answer any other questions, or if you want any more specific information, she said I could definitely reach back out. But I wanted to report back to council what was reported to me.
Thank you. And I do remember there being some pretty big cracks in the parking lot and such, and I just, on the, you know, on the actual signed contract, it's kinda, I mean, similar to the water thing, you know, we just wanna plan for, not necessarily us, but the councils and mayors down the road, if something was to come back and we didn't know for a fact the document was signed, that makes me a little nervous. And in my world, that wouldn't fly.
Yes, I'm still working on getting the signed documents, but that's still to come. I think we'll get there.
Perfect. All right. I don't believe we have anything else, other than I just wanted to thank all the staff real quick for all of your work in preparing for the workshop. I know a lot goes into it. It's, it's a lot of information in a couple days, and I appreciate everything that you guys do for that. It's, it's huge and very, very beneficial for the entire council, so thank you very much. If nothing else, Mr. Peterson.
I was just gonna say, there's a new restaurant opened up in town this week.
Oh, go ahead.
I was gonna say, there's a new restaurant that did open up on Main Street this week, Social BTB, so...
Yeah.
They've done a very soft, quiet opening, they haven't advertised anything, but I know that they are looking forward to feeding the masses.
Yeah. I was really upset I missed it, but I had golf, so, sorry. No, I've been, but I've been in contact with the owner, and he's very excited about being in Nixa, and I think it's gonna be a pretty cool place. All right, sir?
I move that City Council go into closed session under Section 610-021, 1, 2, 3, and 13 of RSMO. I also move that this closed session, records related thereto, and any votes taken by the council during this session shall be closed under Section 610-021 of RSMO, and that the City Council shall stand adjourned after the closed session.
Second.
First by Mr. Peterson, and second by Mr. Lucas. Roll call, please.
Kelly Morris?
Yes.
Aaron Peterson?
Yes.
Darlene Graham?
Yes.
Sean Lucas?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you all very much.